Call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Beech.
Here.
Bickus Neal.
Nancy, you're muted.
Filippos.
Here.
Harvey, here. Kenders.
Here.
Clarin.
Here.
Nogi.
Here.
Novacek.
Here.
Ulander.
Here.
Public comment on agenda items only. No public comment on agenda items. Student representatives to be announced.
Mr. Philippos, the resolution on there for the tax collectors, we do have one public comment from the tax collectors, if you would like me to read that, that did come through.
Sure.
So we had one public comment that was received February 8th at 7:43 PM. It said, Dr. Sargent, I would like to say that I disagree with the resolution for tax collectors' compensation. It does not address how the tax collector will be compensated for the extra work involved with growth in the Yawk School District. Even a borough as small as Aurora now has many acres which could potentially be developed. If you must change to a salary system, I ask that you reconsider the resolution to include compensation for growth. So that was the only public comment with regard to any items that are actually on the agenda for this evening, Mr. Philippos.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report?
Under superintendent's report this evening, I have a couple of congratulations. I want to congratulate H.W. Good, Menden, and Wes Newton Elementary for being recognized as a Pennsylvania PBS Network participating site during the 2021 school year. As a district, we continue to remove non-academic barriers to learning, which means some of the programs we're doing within our elementary schools, whether it be the Principal's 100 Club, the Positive Behavior Support Themes of the Year, our recognition of acts of kindness, academic hard work dedication, our positive social skill development, our lunch bunch, our career lunches, and our kids being role models from one another. We have been recognized by that network for our programming. I want to thank our administration and the staff for their dedication to developing the whole child. We have a couple informational items this evening, and I will pull up the full agenda once we get through this part. A couple informational items this evening. PDE reviewed our single audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th. It was approved for being substantially in compliance with regulations and other relevant federal and Commonwealth policy. The second informational item this evening, we did receive the updated insurance for the Clay Target League for 2021. And the only other item that I have specifically for the purposes of discussion is on our school calendar, we do have an in-service day that would be scheduled for next Monday, which is President's Day. On a normal calendar year, usually we have a snow day by now, and we would just, that day would not exist, and that in-service day would be moved. I'm asking the board that we come to school on Monday, and that we use that in-service day whatever day we are able to get our second dose of the vaccinations in order to be able to have the amount of staff up here to get that done without students being in school. So I don't know what day that will be yet. So I'm asking the board the ability to use that in-service day on another day to be determined based on when the pharmacist will actually be able to get here with second shots.
So you're not doing it on a Saturday like you had proposed earlier?
We will do it sometime during the week, correct?
So not a week?
I can only do it when the pharmacist comes, and he will be here during the week.
A weekday, okay.
And that's why I want to move that day, and I'm hoping to be able to do it on a Friday, so we have the in-service day on a Friday. In order to allow if, for some reason, a vaccination would make somebody not feel well, we would have that threshold of the weekend to make sure everybody comes back to work on Monday, just in case they would have any side effects.
So then, that needs to be a whole day of file instruction for a shot?
It's an in-service day, so it would actually be a professional development day, which it would be anyways. So this coming, the 15th, that Monday, is a professional development day for staff. So regardless, it will still be a professional development day, but it allows us to readily allow the people to come here, get their shots, make sure nobody's ill from them, while still doing whatever professional development we need to do for the staff. So it would be a day where we do professional development opposite. Is any, is the board okay with that?
Yep, I have no problem with that.
So that would be this Monday coming up?
They would have school on Monday, and then that in-service day would move to whatever day we are able to do our doses of vaccination.
Okay, thank you.
And I would communicate that obviously to the public, and so they would be aware. Anybody have any other issues surrounding that?
Yes.
Okay, I am gonna pull up the agenda, and I'm also gonna let Mr. Ditka get in. While I'm letting him in, Mr. Meyer can kind of go over the budget performance report and the construction fund update.
Thank you. In regards to the budget performance report, ended in January 31st, I will tell the board and the public that our real estate collections are complete. As of right now, we collected 92% of our collections. We budgeted 91 and a half, so we're right on track what we budgeted, which again, we reduced by 2% over last year's based on what we thought would be delinquencies due to COVID. With that being said, I will do an internal audit of those tax collection reports and compare it to their actual deposits. And I will report that back in February. On the revenue side, in addition to the tax collection report, the district did receive their $200,000 Care State PCCD grant. We did collect that money, and we still have roughly $280,000 of the federal money that will come in. I will tell you, on the expense end, as I mentioned last month, I have a little bit concerned with our charter school. We ran numbers earlier this week. We're probably trending on the charter school end, a little over $200,000 over what we spent last year. And that's a little bit concerned, but I will say, on the other expenses such as extra pay duties, substitute teachers, utilities, special runs for transportation, they're well underspent, seven months into the school year. So overall, I think this budget is trending surplus, pending an outstanding agreement that we have. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question. Telling like even with the, say for example, like the total local revenue. You have there on the top, year-to-date, that this is what we, you budgeted, or you thought you would collect, but then when you see year-to-date received, you didn't receive as much as you thought you should by the first seven months. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's short by $4,000.
Okay, so then, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So when you see like even down there at the total state revenue, you had predicted year-to-date budget that you would receive for these first seven months about 8.6 million, but you only received actually 8.3 million, so you're 363,000 short. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that right?
It is correct, but you need to, just keep in mind, this is on a cash basis. So let's look at the state section, for example, under pension subsidy of 387,000, the variance. That is an actual claim or submission that we've put into the state that they actually do owe us that money. It just has not been received yet, okay? And that's the difference. This is a cash basis. This is actual cash and actual expenses received as opposed to year-end accrual basis. So when you look at this, this is actual physical cash, and in most cases, what's under the variance is money that is either owed to us yet that we billed, or it's going to be short of collection, so to speak.
Okay, I think when I had spoken to you in the past, you said that the the business managers were going to have a meeting of some kind dealing with what they thought was coming in from the state. Has that meeting occurred?
The meeting occurred on last Friday, and if anybody saw Governor Wolf's budget in his plan for public education for next year, our district stood to receive an extra roughly 250,000 in special ed and an extra 140,000 in basic ed money. We've been advised by PASBO not to budget those numbers, because what Governor Wolf has put out there also involved a, some type of a personal income tax increase that they don't think that there's going to be enough legislative support for that. So in regards to that, in regards to that budget, to me, the biggest thing that could help all 500 school districts across Pennsylvania would be some type of charter school reform that would reset the tuition calculation for how charter schools are funded, which would then give a direct savings to all 500 school districts across Pennsylvania.
So if the state senate and the state house does not approve the governor's budget as it is, then we will be looking entirely different numbers. Is that correct?
Well, entirely different numbers for budgeting for next year. It has nothing to do with the forms that you're seeing in front of you. These are approved form, these are approved numbers for the state for the current year. So under basic ed, we were committed 9.9 million, special ed 1.5 million. So we're gonna get this money that you see in front of you.
For this year, but next year could be a different story, correct?
It could be, but what they normally recommend and what we've been talking about, as we would normally do, we would do conservative budgeting budgeting going into next year, and we would leave those items flat funded as they were for this year.
Right.
And then anything we would get above and beyond that would be utilized, but would not be budgeted for.
Yeah. So my anticipation for state subsidies for next year for budget and purposes would be to budget what our current numbers are, unless there's something prior to our final budget, something set in stone from PDE that shows us an actual allocation we're gonna get. And then my last report is the construction fund balance as of January 31st is $286,628. And as mentioned, last month, 261,000 of that is committed to the water treatment plant over at the middle school. And the balance of the fund, which on this report's roughly $25,000, will be used for the KLH engineering fees for that project. The other items that are on this report, and this will lead into Mr. Ditka's presentation. This report that you're looking at, when we go to refund, we had to submit what construction projects we would consider with any reimbursement or cash back from the refinancing of the bonds. These are the projects that we are going to be submitting under that bond refinance. And with that, Mr. Ditka, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you can make your presentation, unless anybody has any other questions.
Yes, yes, yes. I have comments on this. When I look at this construction fund, and a lot of this has to deal with also with the refinancing of the bonds. I think right now, the board really needs to examine that these projects that are on this construction fund are able to be completed with monies that perhaps maybe the administration is aware of, and also through the bond refinancing. Now, if the money is not there to complete all of these projects, I'm very concerned that perhaps maybe in another year or two, that we'd be looking to borrow more money. So I'm hoping that the administration will assure the board tonight that these projects will all be taken care of with this refinancing, because I'm especially concerned with the three items dealing with the boilers in the elementary school. Can you tell me, Mr. Myers, if one of these boilers would malfunction, what happens?
My guess is we shut down school in that particular building. Dr. Sargent, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if the boiler blows up, then we would have to get an emergency declaration in order to be able to find that, in order to repair it. So obviously, the boilers are an important piece of this. I can tell you, Nancy, your question of the guarantee, will we do all these projects based on the bond refinance? I can tell you that all of those projects on there that add up to whatever it is, 1.2 million, I mean, the bond refinance, the guaranteed savings on that, right now is about $300,000. So I don't think we can guarantee that, but I can tell you, the most important items on this list, those three boilers obviously are at the top of the list for a project that would need to be done with any upfront monies that is taken, how with regard to the bond refinance. And then with regard to having more monies, we've had discussions in-house with regard to possible cares money coming in that we might be able to do some of these things with. We've had conversations with regard to if we have any monies that we're able to put in the fund balance. We've been had conversations about putting possibly funding as we go into our budget season, starting to put some money into our fund balance and budgeting that on a yearly basis. So.
I was gonna say too, yeah. Can I say too, that these boilers and the last bond refinancing that you did was on the construction account. I mean, that was in 2019, and now we're into 2021. I guess I would like to hear maybe a date or something that those three projects can be complete, because we are talking about small children in an elementary school that I am concerned about.
Let me put a couple pieces together for you here.
Okay.
With the document that everybody's viewing right now. If you go down to the project total on the first column with the numbers, it's $1,275,000. 261 of that is for the wastewater treatment plant at the middle school. So let's just round it off and say we have a million dollars of projects left. Working with the underwriter, in the last time we looked at the interest rates with this bond refinancing, we could potentially stand to gain roughly a little over a half a million dollars. You know, dependent on when the bonds are sold and whatnot, dependent on interest rates at those times. So that million dollar number now becomes a half a million dollar number. And then there are some projects on here that could potentially be taken care of or funded through some stimulus cares money that's coming through. We actually have a meeting with PDE and PASBO on Friday to go through the guidelines of some of those. And then you're down to some small projects, you know, between 10 and 25,000 dollars that I think we could, we could potentially just make part of our annual budget over the next two or three years. So the direct point of your question with the boilers, if everything goes well with the bond refinancing, and we sell bonds by the end of this month, and we get the money in in March, I have been working with some vendors about potentially being able to work through these boilers through the summer and have them ready by next fall. But again, the key with that is having the funds available, and the key with that is whatever the board decides on the resolution that Mr. Ditka is gonna talk about in regards to refunding the 2016 bonds. So I hope I put it all together, the pieces, you know, we see a number of 2.75 million on this document, but 261 is towards the treatment plant. And if the bond refinances goes through with the current interest rates, that number is now cut in half. And then there's some potential, some other funding out there through some cares money that could address a few of these other items on here, which gets us down to a manageable number that we can start thinking about putting in our annual budget. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Ditka who is here with us, and he is here to do a brief presentation on the refinancing of the general obligation bond series of 2016. So Mr. Ditka, if you want to take the floor, I don't know if you need me to pull anything up, the board resolution or anything like that, Anthony?
If you can, that would be great, but it's not necessary. The resolution's very long, and if everyone has access to it, I can point you to the right pages.
Yeah, I can move up and down to show them wherever you want me to take it.
So good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all, even if it's just by Zoom. My name's Anthony Ditka, and I'm here as your bond counsel to talk about the resolution in front of you tonight. And some of this has already been touched on, so forgive me for being redundant, but what you've got is a resolution that authorizes your Series 2021 bonds for the purpose of refinancing your 2016 bonds. And if the district decided to take all its savings as debt service reductions, that would be the end of it. But if you're gonna take any of the money upfront, the state requires, it's not my requirement, or Dr. Sardens, or Mr. Myers, but the state requires that we give at least a brief project description for the public, so they know what you're gonna spend it on. So Mr. Meyer and I worked from the list that he just showed you, and so if you kind of look at page five of the resolution, you'll see that what we described as the potential capital projects are boilers, the hot water systems, and exterior doors. And there's probably, and there's a catch-all that says, and other capital improvements throughout the district. The thought being, we picked off some of the very big ticket items there to be addressed on that list, and if we can knock them all off, great, and if we can't, we can get some of the smaller ones with that catch-all language. So the resolution authorizes that refunding of the 2016 bonds for the purpose of saving money and for potentially doing some projects. It sets a savings target of 300,000, and so building off what Mr. Meyer just said, that is a floor, not a ceiling. That is the level at which, you know, the board is comfortable that you would proceed with that level of savings. And I think that's consistent with what Mr. Muscatello described when he was there last week. But again, it is a floor, not a ceiling. If we can do this bond issue quickly and rates hang in where they are today, I'm told by Mr. Muscatello that we could do this and get that half million Mr. Meyer described. So that target, by the way, is on page 33 in section 1101. And here's why that target is significant, other than just what you're comfortable. You may be wondering, we do these resolutions as not to exceed amounts, meaning we put a number out there and say, we won't issue a bond issue that is more than X. In this case, we're not gonna issue bonds more than 7,845,000. And that's a big number. We expect this bond issue to be something closer to like 6,400,000. The reason it's so big is because we have to build a box that is big enough that the issue will fit inside it when it's done. When the bonds are sold, it has to fit inside, and it's not just that total number. It's not just the overall number, the schedules that are attached to the back of the resolution. If we were to flip down three or four more pages, you'll see that it has a maturity in each year, and need two more. There we go. You see, these are maturing in each year. The reason we have to build the box so big is that if, when the bonds are sold, a buyer who wants bonds in 2023 wants more than the 235,000 listed there, we'd have to start over. So the box is built intentionally too big, but the target gives you protection. The target gives the district protection that you won't borrow more than you need. We can't borrow too much and achieve the $300,000 in savings. We can't borrow too much and get you to the point where it's a worthwhile transaction. So that's why that number is so important. I'll pause there. So far, so good?
I have a question. You have on there the coupon rate of 5.5% down the line. Could you explain that to us, please?
Sure. Same thing is true with the rate as it is with the principal amount. Some bonds are sold at discount, some are sold at par, some are sold at premium. And if we put a rate in there that was more indicative of what the rates really look, I mean, the rates are gonna be probably between, you know, 1 and 2 and 1/2 percent as we go through the scale. And then someone wanted a premium bond, someone wanted to pay, you know, pay you more for the bond than it's worth, but then get an interest rate that's higher. That doesn't harm the district, it's just, it's just a math equation. Again, we'd have to start over. So we build that number too big as well to make sure that we don't have to start over at some point. It does not mean that you're gonna pay 5 and 1/2 percent on your bonds, because then we absolutely would not achieve the savings number. Fair?
Okay.
Pausing. Anybody else so far? All right, so, so the resolution then just does these simple things. It authorizes the issuance of your 2021 bonds. It authorizes the sale of those bonds to Benning and Scattergood, that's Mr. Muscatello's firm. It authorizes a filing on your behalf with the State Department of Community and Economic Development. Anytime a local government borrows money, whether it's a school district, a township, a municipality, a county, or in the Commonwealth, you have to go through the process with DCD, as part of what I'm here for. That process started with an advertisement that appeared in the paper on the 5th describing this resolution to the citizens. If you act favorably on this tonight, we'll take a proof publication of that ad, run a new ad, take the proof of publication of that ad, which tells the folks, yes, we adopted the resolution. The resolution itself and a statement, you're within your borrowing capacity, and we sent it all down to the state, and they have 20 days to review. So I'm here to help shepherd you through that process. Resolution also makes some tax law covenants. The other reason I'm here is because these bonds are being issued on a tax exempt basis. That is good news for the school district. You'll get a lower interest rate because the good folks who buy your bonds pay federal income tax on the interest they receive. So you need bond counsel to render that type of opinion that the bond market will accept. So again, if you're wondering why I'm here and that Mr. Matt is not handling this, or, you know, Chris or whoever else would come to the meetings, it's typically because you need someone who specializes in both tax and contract securities law to take care of these things. And by the way, for those of you who don't know, I've been coming to the meetings since 2011. And in 2011, I looked it up, we did something very, very similar. That was a refunding that we took the money upfront to do a couple of capital projects. That was only 148,000 we saved, but the concepts were just the same.
Excuse me, did you say these bonds are taxable bonds?
Tax exempt.
Oh, tax exempt, okay, excuse me, I misunderstood you.
The last thing the resolution does is it authorizes your officers, president, vice president, board secretary, to do all things necessary to close on the issue. So if the board acts favorably on this tonight, we don't need any more official action to get the bonds sold and get the bonds closed. You're authorizing your officers to sign all the necessary documents. That's all I got. My presentation is never as good as the financial one, because that's the good one where all the money is moving. This is just the words. It's 40 pages worth of words. But I will tell you, I want to thank Dr. Sargent and Mr. Meyer and Mr. Matta for all their help getting the ads together, shaping up the definitions and the project descriptions. It's very helpful, and I appreciate them a great deal.
Could I ask a couple other questions, please?
Of course.
Okay. You have in there, in the paper, the documentation on Article 2, "Sell of Bond Settlement" of at least $300 after payment of cost of issuance. Is that to say that instead of maybe receiving the 500,000 that we were thinking of, that if the bonds had difficulty being sold, that it could come down to 300,000? Am I interpreting that correctly, or is it?
Yeah. Earlier, I mentioned that that is a floor. What we're saying is that if the district can receive $300,000 after paying all the costs associated with going through this, that's something you're comfortable with. If the market is such that you can get 500, you're going to get all 500. But this is the level at which you're comfortable proceeding. So the board has to determine, if you want a higher number, that's fine, but if we put a higher number in and we can't achieve it, you know, again, let's say you put 500 in, and when we go to sell bonds, we can only get 485. Again, that's no good, we gotta start over. So that's why we pick a number that's a little more reasonable, but it's gotta be something you're comfortable with.
So the minimum would be the 300,000? That would be the least amount that we would receive, okay? I had another question, too. These bonds, as they are sold, I was involved 30 years ago with when we did the refinancing of the buildings. And I know that a lot of the bonds were sold to people in the community. Are these bonds marketed, who are they marketed to, like institutions?
Yeah, that's probably a better question for Joe, because he'll be actually doing the marketing. But I can tell you that in today's market, rates on these bonds are going to be so low that you're not gonna get a bunch of individuals who buy them. It's harder for an individual to buy a bond that carries a 1% interest rate and hold on to it for five years. So these are going to be sold to institutions. That's not a reflection on Yawk School District. That's every deal I've done in the last, you know, 16 months. Rates have just been so low that a lot of the good folks who would normally buy them are shying away and putting their money elsewhere.
Okay.
They'll be available to those folks. Joe will make them available to anyone who wants to buy them. But to answer your question, I suspect most of these will go to institutional investors. But, but, uh, to answer your question, I suspect most of these will go to institutional investors.
Okay, now in the PSBA course that I took, it was talking about, um. Fund balances and then how it affects your borrowing. Um, and that if it doesn't, wasn't between eight and 10%, that maybe perhaps, um, the borrowing wouldn't be as, as, as easy. Um, do you feel that with the, with the bond issue here because of the fund balance that when this is sent to. A Moody's for a rating, that this is something that they look into and consider?
Uh, I think it is something to consider, but we could probably ask Mr. Meyer. The rating call was last Friday. And so Jim, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot a bit, was that one of the topics of conversation during the call?
We, we, we did discuss a little bit of the fund balance, but, uh, what was, was presented. And, uh, the performance of the district the last few years with, uh, booking the surplus. They were very satisfied with, uh, with our status right now.
Okay. And one other question. Um, I see in your, um. The information as far as your, your company, um, that you list in there, um, that you are not a municipal advisor. And that, um, the information that you give us, uh, basically, I guess, is determined by the board as far as our responsibility. As to, um. How we handle this financially. Would that be a true statement?
It is a true statement as it relates to bidding and scatter good. The information you're looking at is from Joe's company. Um, I work for a firm called Dinsmore and Scholl. We're a law firm and we are your lawyer. Just like Mr. Mata and the folks at Dodera Mata and Cambest are your lawyer. So we owe you a fiduciary responsibility. Uh, I need to put your interests ahead of everything else. So, um, as it relates to me, that's not true. I owe you the best duty I can owe you. As it relates to Joe's company. Um, yes, he, the, yeah, the MSRB has put out rules that require that information that you're looking at. That describes the relationship between an investment banker. They are buying your bonds. It is an arms length transaction. And so, uh, they are not giving you financial advice. But that's intended to say, but I will say this. Uh, if Mr. Muscatello didn't do a good job for you, uh, it would be. To him because school districts are tight. You go to PSBA, others go to Pasbo. Uh, I, I, I've worked with Joe for many, many times over 20 years and I think he'll do a fine job.
Okay, thank you.
My, my one comment on that Nancy will be, would be this. And it's something that Mr. Muscatello and I have talked about. What, when, when this transaction is all said and done. We actually get and pay for what's called a verification report. That, that verifies all the numbers when it's all said and done. It verifies all the numbers in this transaction. It's done by an independent audit firm CPA firm that verifies all the numbers in the transaction to, to make sure that they're. They're, they're true and accurate. So we, we do do a double check through, uh, an independent verification report. When the transaction is all said and done.
Mr. Myers, I have one question. Uh, I remember the board. Looked into this and requested this to be bid out. So that move was a good move by the board to bid this process out. Then I take it.
Yes, when, when, when it's all said and done and we look at the closing cost, uh, with the adjustment, with the underwriter fees. Uh, the, the, the bond council fees, uh, the solicitor fees. And there's, uh, some printing fees that Joe and I negotiated down. Uh, we're, we're probably looking at saving probably $25,000 just in fees. Since when we first started this practice, uh, back in October.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you very much.
Money than by having him do that process.
What's that Nancy?
I said, so we saved even more money than by standing strong and making him go back and look at more numbers.
I would think that Mr. Myers, we probably even saved on the, um, maybe the bond interest rate as well.
Yeah, uh, the, the, the numbers that, uh, Mr. Muscatello and I talked about, uh, last week. That was presented to you, uh, members of the board. The interest rates are a lot better than they were back in November. Uh, they are trending a little bit against us now. That's. I think it's why it's important we get this, uh, resolution moving. The draft of the credit report is due to us on Thursday and we, we can start looking, uh, you know, provided everything falls into place. Within the next two weeks, we can possibly move on these transactions. My, my only recommendation to the board, uh. Mr. Dick alluded to it. We can either take the cash upfront or reduce debt service. Uh, my recommendation to the board, given that we, we've looked at the construction fund would be to take the cash upfront as part of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ditka. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Any other board questions?
Uh, before we vote on it, I would like to make a couple of comments.
Um, you'll. Well, you can have the, um, once we get the motion and the second, then we'll ask for, then we'll go to board comments.
Okay.
Under budget and finance, approve the resolution presented by the bond council authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds. The amount not to exceed 7,845,000. In order to refund all portions of the school district's outstanding general obligation bond series 2016. Providing the refunding produces combined aggregate total debt savings. On all the debt being refunded on a present value basis after allowing for a cost issuance of at least 300,000. Section three, attachment one. I need a board motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Bech. The second.
Harvey.
Second by Harvey. Any board questions?
I have comments. Okay. I want to say some years here. 1997, 2001, 2002, 2003, 2006, 2008, 2011, 2013, 2014, and 2016. Not to include the current ones. Uh, 30 years ago, I hate to bring up my age, um, when the schools were renovated. Had the boards that followed kept in the boundaries. As far as not extending the length of time of these bonds. Uh, our school district would probably be debt free. Somewhere down the line, we have to get a grip on this. We can't constantly be refinancing bonds. We have to, if they stay within the same terms, I have no problem. Uh, but I would hope in the future that the terms would not be extended. I'm a bit concerned.
Bond is not being extended.
Yeah, correct, correct, correct.
In fact, we have not extended the years on any bond since at least the timeframe I've been here in 2011.
Okay, well, some, somebody must have done that. Um, my big concern right now is, like I said, and I, I guess I will take the word of the administration. Um, that there will be enough monies here to complete the project if this bond goes through. Um, if you look at the current bonds that are outstanding, and I think there are three or four of them. Uh, to put it bluntly, um. The credit cards are maxed out. They're maxed out. Those bond issues, even if the next one comes up. Uh, within the next year or two, uh, there's a good chance that the interest rates won't be as low. So those bonds will not probably be refinanced. If we have misjudged this and we need to borrow again for these projects. What will happen is we will have to take out another bond issue. And what that will cost us is probably another $100,000 and at least in fees. So I'm going to trust the administration that they feel comfortable enough. That this will take care of all the projects for the schools. So that is my comment.
Any other board comments? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the board minutes and approve the treasurer's report, January 2021. I need a motion.
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders, a second.
Bicis Neal.
Second by Bicis Neal. Any board questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Prove the general but, uh, general fund bills for payment. I need a motion.
Harvey.
Motion by Harvey, a second.
Navatchek.
Second by Kenders. Sorry, Mr. Navatchek. Mr. Kenders beat you on that one.
Okay.
Um, any, any board questions?
Uh, is this on the bills? I have, okay. I have four questions. Um, there was a, a lot of small amounts dealing with current real estate taxes. Um, like they look like, uh, refunds. Um, can you explain what happened?
Those were refunds. Actually, the board made a decision to extend the resolution so there wouldn't be a penalty period. And unfortunately, the tax statements and things went out prior to when the board made that decision. So those. Items you see there are actually reimbursements to people that paid a penalty when they shouldn't have.
Okay, thank you. Also, I've noticed this come up before, um, Adelphi Education. Um, is that a school for, um, children that have problems?
Adelphi is one of our schools, one of our, uh, private schools that we send children to, yes.
Okay, so, okay. And my next question is, uh, digital assurance. Uh, $1,500? Could you?
That goes with our bonds and Jimmy, you want to explain that?
That, that is a SEC reporting requirement. We have to file every year. Uh, we have to upload our annual budget. We have to upload our audit once it's approved. And there's a series of about 20 other data item and items between enrollment, pension fund. Uh, reimbursements from the state that all have to be uploaded every year into a municipal site. It's actually called Emma, uh, that all relates back to our bonds. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement.
Okay, one last question. Uh, grade point resources, resources behavioral or specialist?
Yes, we have a behavior specialist in the district that's paid for out of one of the grants that the district received. So that is somebody that is contracted service that visits all of our buildings, um, during the course of the week to. Um, assist in the classroom with behaviors of children and, and work with us to help resolve those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions?
I have a question, um, for the basketball, century basketball, $1,900.
Yeah, those were uniforms, tops and bottoms, 20 of them.
And that was approved in the budget?
That was part of the budget cycle, yes.
Yes, and it was, uh, it was also bid out and I took the low bid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions? Roll call vote, please.
Beach.
No.
Bicis Neal.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi?
Yes.
Navatchek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Phil opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one.
Secretary's report.
Executive sessions were held on the following dates, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, before the meeting for personnel litigation. And there are two items, um, to vote on.
Motion to approve policy. Two, one, eight point three and motion to approve policy 103. I need a motion.
McLaren.
Motion by McLaren, a second.
Bicis Neal.
Bicis Neal, any board questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under professional employees. Need a motion to approve Tammy Simila to be added to the substitute list and acknowledge the FMLA. Request for employee 941 effective Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. I need a motion.
Navatchek.
Motion by Navatchek, a second.
Second.
Second by Nogi. Any board questions?
Yeah, question on the FMLA. What does that stand for?
Family Medical Leave.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have seven items under athletic activity. Uh, motion to approve the following volunteer baseball coaches. Approve Aaron Morgan as part-time varsity track coach. Approve the resignation of Alana Sleef, junior varsity softball coach. Uh, pending advancement, approve the swimmers and the coaches to participate in the WPIL swimming championship. Uh, pending advancement, approve the swimmers and coaches to participate with PIAAL swim championships. Number six, pending advancement, approve the wrestlers and the coaches to attend the WPIL championships. And number seven, pending advancement, approve the wrestlers and the coaches to attend the PIAA wrestling preliminaries on March 6th, 2021. I need a motion.
So move.
Mr. Nogi, a second.
Navatchek.
Second by Navatchek. I think we want to thank, um, the junior varsity coach for the, the time she served under, um, Mr. Harvey. Um, Dr. Sargent, we usually send out a letter of thanks to the coaches, correct?
We can.
Okay. Just wanted to thank her for her time at Yawk. I know that she had played under, under, um. You know, for the Cougars and, and was a coach there. And we just want to thank her for her, um, for her time served. Any other board questions?
Yes, I have. Did we do an exit interview? Greg.
I'm sorry, did we do an exit interview? You talking about for Alana or?
Yes.
No.
For Freddie Coach.
We did exit interviews for the fall coaches just this past week. Um, so.
But somebody might be reaching out to her. I'm just curious. I mean, I think that's something that we should start to see if there's. Any reason that on our part or any issues with coaching staff of, of. Why she resigned or how, you know, her experience was here at Yawk for.
I, I don't dis, I don't disagree with that. Like I said, we, we handle it kind of seasonally. And we just actually, this, this, this past week did the, um, fall, it's fall sports exit interviews. So. Um, we, we would not have been in. That would not have been in that cycle.
Sure, and I, I'd like, I'd hate for that to fall through the cracks. So maybe we could, um, do something regarding that.
Uh, yeah.
Just an exit interview or, you know, a reason why she's resigning from, you know, coaching at Yawk?
I could see if we could set up maybe a Zoom meeting with, uh, with Brian, uh, the AD and any of the committee that would be available to do that. I, I don't have an issue with doing that.
I just think that's something nice to reach out and just say we appreciate and. There's anything that we could change or do for her or, you know, is it totally something other than why she's resigning?
And I'm not, I'll, I'll say, I'm not sure that she really even got a chance to be an assistant coach because I believe last year was supposed to be her first year and they didn't have a season for the most part. So. I don't know that she even had much of a chance to, to be an assistant coach unless I, unless I'm wrong on the dates, but I'm pretty sure that last year was, should have been her first year.
I think, I think you're right. Yeah. Nonetheless, she.
Nonetheless, yeah, I'd still like to have something back on it.
Correct. I'm just, I'm just saying that it, I don't think she even had a chance to coach, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Not a problem.
I have a question.
I'm sure, I'm sure everybody on the athletic committee, um, Sue, Greg, Mr. Navatchek and myself will be happy to. To see why and, and look into that. But like I said, we'll thank her and, um, we could look into a little more detail of that. Is there any other board questions?
Uh, yeah, my question is, is the athletic committee, uh, they make all these recommendations then? They feel comfortable, the athletic committee? With everything we're voting on?
As far as, um. Paying, you know, paying the coaches for advanced, you know.
Well, every item from one to seven, because I don't know, I don't know.
Firing these people.
I, I, I mean, I don't know these people and I don't know the information about this. So I guess I'm going to take the advice and the recommendations of the athletic committee. And I'm asking, is this something?
For example, number one, the volunteer baseball, baseball coaches are generally chosen by. The, uh. Head coach for baseball. Um, and the administration are the ones that are following up to make sure that they have their background checks and whatnot done. I, I should say administration with the AD. Uh, or making sure that they have their clearances in order to be a volunteer coach. Um, we don't necessarily, you know, we, we involve ourselves with hiring the head coaches for each sport, the committee. But not necessarily, um. With the assistants that they pick. We, you know, as long as it's kind of their choice and as long as, uh, that the. Eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed with their, with their clearances, then we let them make that decision.
Any other board questions before we vote? All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under District Operations, a motion to approve a resolution to set real estate tax collector compensation for the school years beginning July first, twenty twenty-two through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, C attachment eight. And a motion to ratify the updated, um, ensuring implementation, mitigation efforts as an addendum to the previously approved Yawk School District Health and Safety Plan. I need a motion.
McLaren.
Motion by McLaren, a second.
Second.
Second by Nogi, any board questions?
Um, I just have, I guess, a, a comment as far as, um, the real estate tax collectors. Um, I learned something, um, I guess that I wasn't aware of. I think Mr. Bech was, um, making a, a statement as far as the, that he felt that we should just go, all go with Keystone. And I don't think that that's a simple, um, solution because from my understanding from Dr. Sarden and Mr. Myers is even like the situation in Sewickley Township, where Mrs. Harvey, um, uh, is no longer there. If there is a situation where, uh, someone in Sewickley Township wants to run for tax collector, uh, we have to go and allow that person. And, uh, we would be jumping from right now Keystone back to a tax collector. So I think this is something that probably if you want to be on with one particular tax, taxing body throughout the whole school district, this has to be some type of legislation that is changed, uh, on the state level. And it's pretty much out of our control as far as the local level because we can be bouncing from different kind of, uh, collecting from year to year. So that's my only comment.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, my question for Jim is what, how, how much do we, um, pay, um, to get Swickley's taxes collected at this time?
The arrangement we have with Keystone Collection is we, we, we paid him a dollar fifty per parcel bill. And then on top of that, plus postage. So i, i, it is a lot cheaper to use a third-party collection agency than, than what our current tax collectors are. Our, our tax collectors are getting payday is salary.
Yes, like, that's my question is, to me, that's, should be the rate that we pay is obviously it can be done for that amount of money. That is what, that is my opinion on this. I don't understand why we pay what we pay when, that it can be done at that rate.
I think the problem is the smaller municipalities or boroughs. If, um, we go buy a per-tax bill, it actually probably would hinder tax collection there, Jim. As I think you advised the board there. And by going to a salary system there, it allows the smaller boroughs. And I think you look back to a three-year average. What you did was that allows for fairness. But what it doesn't allow for is, and, and I think it protects the taxpayers and the Yawk School District. When the Westinghouse Project takes over there or weeks where we get a lot of growth there or in South Huntington Township, or for example, uh, Tanaska, that the tax collectors aren't making a ton of money because the effort to do one bill on Tanaska to do a private citizens' bill is the same amount of work, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So.
I think that.
By going, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think Mr. Bech is, is making a good point with, with, you know, the cost of Keystone. But, uh, Keystone, with the amount of collections they do, they, they can spread their cost out a lot further than a, in a small local tax collector. In, in working up these compensation rates, try to be fair to the current collectors. And that we were looking to cut their wages a whole lot. They're guaranteed the amount that's shown on the resolution, uh, regardless of, uh, let's say a taxpayer's ability to pay. They're, they'll collect this. You know, and I'll say this, a little bit of my concern is the record keeping. I, I, I think there has been a number of county audits that have addressed the timeliness of deposits coming from our tax collectors to back to the school district. So I, I, I think the salaries we have on here are very fair. I think there's some, some areas of improvement, uh, that's, that could be done with tax collectors as far as record keeping. And more importantly, the, the timing of payments back to the school district with the collections. But as Mr. Filippo said, this is a three-year average. I think it's a fair picture of, of, uh, what it takes to, to collect the taxes in each of the municipalities.
I, I do agree with Mr. Bech that the Keystone would save, um, the Yawk School District a lot of money. But that is more, it should be dealt with by the House of Representatives and the P A State Senate. Is if they want to switch that, then they should take that up in consideration with the governor to pass that law. Then it would make it easier for school districts to just choose somebody like Keystone, which actually, like I said, to our taxpayers makes more sense. And it saves the school district. What do we save, Jim? About ten thousand dollars by the?
Yeah, we, we saved over a little thirteen thousand by switching to Keystone with Swickley Township.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is that's what it's worth to do it. And that, so if they can't do it for that, then, then no one will run. And then we can use Keystone.
Yeah, I, I, I do see that, but what, I, I, usually in this area, everybody seems to run for tax collector.
Now, what he's saying is.
Yeah, because there's a lot of money.
What Keystone would charge, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry, Miss, McLaren?
I'm trying to interpret what Mr. Bech is trying to say. And I'm, I'm trying to think that he's saying to make their salary equal to what Keystone would charge us. So cut their salary to whatever it would be for Keystone, correct?
So if South Huntington and Sewickley were comparable, which they are, but they're close to comparable, Keystone's collecting for give or take around thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars. So if that was switched over in, um, South Huntington, then that would be approximately, probably close to the same thirteen to fifteen thousand. I think Ken's saying, reduce the salary at least, um, in that area by that much to save that money. And if people are willing to run and do it for that amount of money, then people wouldn't necessarily run.
Yeah, he's saying, cut it to what Keystone would charge us and see if, and make the, give that the salary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, that's the going rate. Keystone's doing it. They're a big company that does this and they do it right. That's what it costs to do it.
This, I mean, if that's what the board decides to do, it's, it's your call.
Oh, that's just my recommendation.
I, I will say, I, I do have some good tax collectors out there that they're very good with their deposits. They're very good with the reporting. So, but to Mr. Bech's point, you, you know, uh, one of the cost analysis I did is what it costs to collect taxes. And like I said, I'm, I'm paying Keystone a dollar fifty per bill plus postage. My total bill for Swickley Township for Keystone so far this year has only been like eighty-four hundred dollars. It comes out to roughly, it may maybe be two dollars, uh, two dollars a, a parcel. Some of the smaller municipalities, it's costing me thirteen dollars per parcel because of the sliding scale that we've been paying on. So I mean, there is some savings back to the district by doing that. Uh, but again, I, I'm, I'm also trying to be fair to the current tax collectors in, in the duties that they perform.
I think if you want to go to Keystone, I think the key is that you, uh, write a letter to your state rep, your state senator, and you tell them you want the law changed, that, uh, we don't have to be looking at this, that one minute you got a tax collector and the next minute you have an agency. And you just, you just give it a clean slate.
I'm not saying I want to go to Keystone. I'm saying Keystone is showing us what it's, what the, how much it should cost to do this.
Well, I, I didn't look at the cost, the, the total cost wise as far as how many parcels are being looked at. But I mean, you could maybe be looking at some of these smaller boroughs that maybe they're only going to make five, six hundred dollars to collect the taxes. I, I don't know. But I mean, some people would say they, they, it wouldn't be worth their, their, their effort.
That's what he's banking on.
Well, well.
I think in, in presenting this.
Banking on.
I think that presenting this resolution to the board and the format's in this evening, we were trying to take into consideration, you know, all factors. You know, trying to make it fair for the district, fair, um, with regard to what the tax collectors have been doing up to this point in time. This resolution can be redone in the point in time, I think it's every four years. And then also say, for example, somebody would not run for a position then, or would run for a position. This, you can have addendums to this, I think, over the course of the four years. If someone would vacate the position or if you would move to, from Keystone to somebody taking the position, let's say, for example, in Swickley Township. So although this is a resolution, I think we tried to do our best to make it fair across the board for the people currently collecting, knowing and understanding that some of your smaller communities, we don't want to hurt those people that are doing their best by the district either. So we have to come to a happy medium here.
I think, I think this is.
Living in the district to pay taxes.
Yeah, I think this is a happy medium and I agree with, uh, Nancy Bickus Neal that this should be kicked back to Harrisburg for them to solve this problem. And, um, we don't want to hurt those people, you know, in the smaller communities like a, a run of borough and Suderville Borough and those communities that may only make thirty-five hundred or four thousand dollars, you know, in, in, um, collecting the taxes from the school district. I understand what Mr. Bech says and I think he has some valid points. But I think this should be kicked back to Harrisburg for the, for the ultimate decision since they're the ones that, you know, create and fix the problems.
And this is our, I, I don't understand how that, you don't understand that they are showing us what it should cost to do this. I don't understand that.
Well, you could look at it another way too. Um, you take these, um, salaries from these local tax collectors, in turn, um, they won't be paying wage tax because you're cutting their salaries. These are people that live in our school district and pay taxes in our school district.
I don't think that's a good, that percentage doesn't really work out to our benefit there, but.
Well, we don't know that. We haven't really run the numbers.
Some of these positions are elected office though, so you can't make it, I mean, that, that's some of the issue as well, so.
Well, I understand it's an elected office, but we sent the price. So that's what I'm saying is our chances, right now, we, the, the, the price is Keystone, what Keystone charges would be what I would recommend we should pay. But that's, that's, I had to bring it up now because no one would talk about it before, but I know it's not going to make it. So let's just go ahead and vote and just pull out number one for me so I can vote for it or vote against it.
Okay, we'll make a motion to approve resolution to set real estate tax compensation for the school year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, section eight, attachment one. I need a motion. Or actually, I think we got to, if, uh, McLaren and Nogi withdraw their, their motions.
Yeah, I'll rescind my.
Okay. So need a motion on the floor for the resolution to do item one.
So move.
Motion by Nogi, second by McLaren, roll call vote.
Bech?
No.
Bickus Neal?
Yes.
Harvey, yes? Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi?
Yes.
Navatchek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Filippos?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one.
Hey, I, I just want to make a real quick comment. And, and, and Ken, I, I didn't get to before, I'm sorry. Ken, I do agree with you. My only comment on it is, it, the cost of doing business is different for a company the size of Keystone than it is for an independent, you know, working out of their home office or whatever. When you look at the volume that Keystone is doing, yeah, they can save money. And I don't disagree with you at all. I understand that they're setting that number for us. But in turn, we have to look at, again, the, the individuals as opposed to the corporation, if you want to look at it that way. You know, same, same as what is it cost Walmart to sell a jar of pickles versus a little corner convenience store? Um, you know, their cost of business is, is much lower than the tax collectors working out of their home offices. So I, I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to make that statement that that, that's a hard decision for any of us to even consider making when we're looking at, you know, the individuals as opposed to the, the big company.
I know when you're spending someone else's money, it's easier to, to just hand it out. But that's what I'm saying is we're spending taxpayers' money.
I, I don't disagree with you.
We should try to get it done as cheap as we can.
I, I completely agree with you. I completely agree. I just wanted that taken into consideration, that's all.
Excuse me. Uh, motion to ratify the updated attestation ensuring implementation of the mitigation efforts as addendum to the previously approved Yawk School District Health and Safety Plan. Need a motion.
McLaren.
Motion by McLaren, second by Nancy Bickus Neal, any board questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. W I U seven and Legislative Council, Mr. Kenders?
Actually, the last meeting we had, we had our, um, our special board meeting, so I was not able to attend that one.
Okay, C W C T C, Nancy Bickus Neal?
Um, I was invited by the administration to, um, tour the buildings and I hope, uh, it happens.
E S B A?
Uh, nothing to report right now.
Um, any committee reports? Anything, uh, under old business? Anything under new business?
Yeah, I have something. We were sent out, the, the board was sent out some information regarding use of masks, um, for sports. Uh, I guess this falls back a little bit on some of the discussion the committee had the other night, the four of us, plus Brian and the A D regarding use of masks during sports. There's a, a, a significant number of teams, more teams are, are not requiring masks than are requiring masks currently. And there are some variations in that depending on the sport, uh, and depending on where they're located. You know, there's, there's different factors that fall into place. But, um, like, we already have lost at least one game, uh, because of the mask policy. I, I think, looking forward, you know, weighing out the, the, the positive and negative effects of wearing the mask during sporting events, I'd like to, to, uh, motion that we make the mask policy for athletics a parent decision whether or not they want their student athlete to wear the mask while they are on the field of play, while they are on the sideline or bench, they should be required to still have the mask on.
I second that.
Wait, can you just reword that again?
Can, can, did somebody write that down? Can I, if you want to read it back to me, I'll try to word it a different way for you that makes it. I, I'm not good at making the motions like that.
You're letting the parent decide.
I would like to let it be a parent decision whether they want their student athlete to wear a mask on the field of play. But masks would still be required on the sidelines or benches at all times.
Okay, I got you now. Thank you.
And the field of play would, you know, that would be the baseball field, softball field, football field, lacrosse field, basketball court, volleyball court, whatever the sport may be.
So there's a motion on the table. The motion is to allow parents to decide whether or not students wear masks during play. But when those students are on the sidelines in the dugouts or not playing on the game of play field, they would always have them on on the sidelines. Is that correct, Mr. Nogi?
That is. That is, that is correct, yes.
So, there's a motion on the floor, I guess.
The question I have, do, do we really need to specify parents decide? Can't we just make, I mean, would the motion just say, our, our policy would be, they don't have to wear them when they're playing, and they have to wear them when they're on the sidelines? And then, obviously, parents, if, if their parent tells them to wear it, they're, they're going to wear it, but I don't think we need to specify, yeah.
Yeah, I like the notion that the York School Board is saying that they do not have to wear a mask while they're playing the sport, but if they're on the bench, they do, and if a parent so desires to say, while you're playing second base, you have to wear a mask, that they can wear on the field.
I agree. The only reason I worded it that way and, and was including the parents was because most student athletes are under the eight years, 18 years of age, and their parents are generally still making the decisions, so that was why I went that way. As opposed to it being a student decision, individually, I was looking at it from custodial, you know, the, the parent or custodial decision, whether or not they would allow their student athlete to wear them. That was the only reason I worded it that way, but if you would like to reword it as a board, I'm fine with that.
My question is, playing the game, that also includes practices as well, correct?
I would say, as, as long as they're on the court or the field, yes. If they're on the bench, if they're standing off to the side, being coached, then they should have the mask on.
Oh, I reworded it, how does this sound? Motion to allow students during active play, practice, or competition not to wear masks, but require masks during all other times.
Perfect. If that suits, I think Al was the one seconding that, so I'm fine with, continuing with the motion that way.
And that's going to be all sports right now, from fall till spring then, so that's going to be immediately taking effect then, right, Mr. Nogi?
That, yes.
Okay.
Who was the motion in the second on that?
I was the motion, Al was the second, I believe.
Yes.
Is there any board questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I have a question. I'd like to refer my vote, I think, to Mrs. McLaren, who is a nurse, and who's more familiar with probably having taken a lot of seminars dealing with COVID, what her opinion is.
Well, thanks, Nancy Bickusneal, but with, again, I feel that if they're, if they're outside, or if they're on the court, if they're playing the sport, I mean, I don't want to be held in a court of law, Gary, can I give my opinion?
Hey, you, I mean, I think she's just asking for some information, that's not going to, you know, it may sway certain people's votes, but it doesn't mean that, it's just your opinion from your experiences, that's, you have no exposure there.
Yeah, I, I feel that if, if, you know, they're outside, or they're playing the sport, I, I don't have a problem with them not wearing a mask, if they're sitting next to each other in the dugout, and they're, you know, they're not far apart, they're just sitting there without a practice or doing anything, but they should have a mask on. But I have no problem with them not wearing a mask during the practice, active play.
Okay, so you support the motion, then?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I have one other question, though, during that other motion that we had in the past, you know, we had stipulations regarding the opposing team, that, remember about them wearing a mask or not?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, if you look at the York softball section, we're the only school district that's requiring our kids to wear a mask.
Okay, so that will, that would negate all of that, then?
Yeah, they would follow their own school rules when they come here.
All right, we wouldn't hold it against them, okay.
Yeah.
Can, can I make another comment, too, and this is something that maybe I would like to address to the parents out there? I just want to make the parents aware that there's probably a lot of senior citizens in this community who have not gotten vaccinated, and we have vaccinated our teachers, so that our children could go back to school. So, if there are parents out there that have a grandmother or a relative who hasn't been vaccinated, thank them for putting the children first, okay?
Any other board questions?
You know, my, my whole fear on this is, what happens is, if they're not wearing the mask when they're playing, then it's very rare that they put it on when they come off, and they're going to dugout or on the sidelines, and we have to try to do something. I mean, I've watched these games on, and, and they're not wearing the mask during the games, no one's saying anything, so we need to make sure they're wearing the mask when they're, you know, on, they're not playing, or whatever, like, there, there has to be some way that we make sure that happens.
I will take a little bit of offense to that, because I can tell you, things are being said to the kids if they don't have their masks on, and we will continue to follow the board motion, and when kids aren't on the field, and they're not in active play, practice, or competition, we will continue to address that issue as we have from the start of this to the best of our ability.
I can honestly tell you that when me, Sue Harvey, Greg, Nogi, Mr. Novacek, and myself were at the school building, that me and Mr. Novacek were socially distanced, we had our masks down, that the principal actually came up to me and Mr. Novacek and told us to put on our masks, so, which we did comply. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Novacek?
Yes, absolutely.
And we were more than six feet apart, but we, you know, we still complied. Brian was very diligent, making sure that that was taken care of.
But like I said, I know, for example, that even the school board, when we were there, that the rules were enforced upon us when we were socially distant apart, so, you know, he, they are enforcing the rules, I mean, at least on the school board, they were.
Sure, there's a motion on the table, please?
There's a motion, a second, no other board questions, we'll do a roll call vote.
No.
Bickusneal?
Yes.
Harvey? Yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi?
Yes.
Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Filippos?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one.
Solicitors report, Mr. Matt.
Hold on one second, I have another thing that I wanted to discuss. Just question on buses, I've been talking to different parents regarding some issues that have been going on, I, I know there's, a lot of the times, I, I actually personally, what, what kind of triggered me to think about this was, I actually received a call last week that our bus stop, which was normally a high school bus stop, was picked up at 6:35 a.m., was being moved to 6:15 a.m., which is 20 minutes earlier. Bus is still arriving at that time, so I talked to some other parents in other locations, and I can say this much, too, that, that I have joint custody of my kids, so at some, at some point, they live in Harmony with their mom certain days, and their bus schedule, they live very near the VFW in Harmony when they're with their mom, which is, as we know, probably three to five minutes from the high school, and they're being picked up at 6:15 a.m. there, with a significant bus ride, about a 40, 45-minute bus ride to get to the high school, when they're literally two miles away, maybe, and I understand that for routing purposes that has to be done, however, if they're combining routes because of, of a lack of students in the building, which I understand makes sense, is there any compensation for us, or, or are we, is, are we being compensated in any way for less buses running, less, less drivers on the buses to combine routes?
They, they would not necessarily be combining routes, because you still have to have students routed and scheduled for all of these buses, but I can tell you, if the students aren't at stops, that would be something that would cause the buses to be, to go quicker through their route, but we are not combining routes, so to say, we still have 23 bus routes, because you do have to schedule kids, you have to roster all your kids, because kids have the right to ride the bus at any given point in time, so it wouldn't be for the purposes of having less buses if any routes are being combined or moving quicker.
Could you, I, I mean, is that what the point would probably be, then, if, well, if they're picking them up 20 minutes earlier, you would think that the route would be taking longer than not quicker, I'm just.
There could be additional stops, there could be something like that. I mean, Mr. Nogi, if you want to call me tomorrow, give me the specifics on the bus number and that, I would be happy to look into that. I can tell you, last week, we just came back to school as though it was almost our first day, had we have missed 70 days of school, so if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I'll be happy to look into that situation for you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Solicitors report?
Mr. President, I have no report for the public session this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, citizens' comments?
Mr. Filippos, we have two additional comments that came after the board meeting last month, one from Mary Papellas, and another one from Mallory Gergli. Do you want me to read these?
Yes, please.
So, the first one we received was received on January 19th at 12:12 p.m. Hello, my name is Mary Papellas, and my son is in first grade at HW Good. I would love to see if the board could reevaluate the virtual curriculum for elementary grades. They are asked to be online with their teacher from 9:30 to 3:00 with one break for lunch. There needs to be a compromise between learning and screen time. I cannot comprehend how anyone would think that it is healthy for a six or seven-year-old to be logged onto a computer that long, five days a week. Could there be, could their day be condensed, could they be given one half-day of screen-free time a week where they can read and do their work away from the computer? Could they get one day off of live virtual and just complete their assignments at their own pace? We can all agree that in-person learning is what is best for the children, but since that is not an option for the foreseeable future, the point of my email is to make you aware, we can make virtual learning more conducive for a young child who is still developing their attention span and cannot read or write without the help of a parent or teacher. Thank you for your time. With regard to this, I can tell you, we do make adjustments for our kiddos, especially our smallest children at the elementary school, to, to try to help alleviate some of that screen time. Now that we're back in school, I do believe that this issue has been resolved. And there was an additional email with regard to Mallory Gergli, she submitted an email at 5:09 on January 19th. It says, hello, my name is Mallory Gergli, I'm the mom of three students in the district and the president of West Newton Elementary PTO. I realize the comments were due by 12 o'clock today for inclusion in tonight's meeting, however, due to my line of work, I was unable to submit this before now. Although I am fully aware that this comment may not be made public, I feel very strongly about Item 10 on the agenda under District Operations, and it is worth my time and effort to make every attempt to convey this. I strongly urge board members to deeply consider rescinding advertising for a new superintendent. Dr. Sarn has been an extraordinary asset to our community and district. She knows the community, she knows what works and what doesn't, she has the best interest of all students at heart, and works hard to put those interests first. I am confident in her ability to continue to lead our district in the right direction. The thought of bringing someone into our district that doesn't understand our culture and way of life saddens me. Dr. Sarn has accomplished so much in her time as superintendent, and those shoes would be impossible to fill. Again, I strongly urge you to vote on the motion to rescind advertising for a new superintendent. Please reconsider giving her a contract that she deserves, and more importantly, the students deserve. Thank you for your time, Mallory Gergli. And those are the only two public comments.
Thank you, Dr. Sarn. Need a motion to adjourn? Time is 8:56.
McLaren.
Motion by McLaren, a second.
Novacek.
Second by Novacek, any board comments? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.